This is like the worst quality.
What are they doing next to the?
A bit, right?
City building down there on the way out of town.
Oh, that's gonna be three homes, two homes.
City building? Oh, a public workshop, yeah, three parcels.
Where does the, so there's that road that's supposed to be planted that goes out to Southside.
The Southside corridor thing.
Where does that come out?
I'll be dead in a while, so I'm not worried. It comes, it goes across from Haysville, kind of cuts through.
To Southside, to South State, to?
So somewhere in the vicinity of.
I wasn't realizing.
Well, and the buildout of stuff that's there, I don't, it's gonna be very challenging. It would be almost easier if they went in next day, even at the backside and went up by the water point. Either way, it's all gonna be challenged because of wetlands and that.
They did that, though.
Well, I think we're gonna, we're more looking in. Punch that through, it's more logical, and it's already there.
Better pave that and seal it off.
I think.
Isn't that mind challenge?
Um, they had to remove them, but, um, yeah.
I thought it was still all mine.
Or I guess they had to remove the arsenic or whatever. I don't know, whatever was in it, isn't that what it was? But warehouse are gonna have to come through and do all of that stuff. Well, I've been here since they did it, so a few years ago.
Cause I know Jerry, we talked about camping.
Over the fields.
The BlackBerry people, so get out there and not parking.
Yeah, it's still on the horizon. Still no way, but it'll be part of probably the earth.
Considering what I've gone through, how do I know?
Amazing. How do you feel?
Uh, little, little sore. Squatter.
Yeah, well, does everyone know? I just, I didn't say.
Yeah, I didn't wanna say anything before, but it's okay after.
Okay, I'm like.
Uh, lung surgery for lung cancer.
Oh, oh boy.
Uh, they removed upper right lobe of the lung. Reasonable.
Good, that's, yeah, so you do feel pretty good? You do feel pretty good?
Yeah, yeah.
So they just go like a little?
Uh, three inch underneath the arm and two in the back.
Oh, wow.
Too small. Robotics. What? And I think this part over here is just, uh, inflammation.
Is that all you have to do now?
I think so. I gotta go back and see the, see my doctor next week.
Yeah. Wow.
But hopefully everything's fine. They're adjustable.
I was just trying to figure out this part.
That was, uh, yeah.
So they know they got it all, or do they do further?
I think that my doctor told me next week. I guess that's a little serious and probably.
No.
They need to use some of the, two days if this time is still there. Actually, it's supposed to get a biopsy. Only.
Oh.
So.
Turned into a little bit bigger?
He's, he said, well, we're gonna do a biopsy, but things could change.
Oh. I'd rather them do it and get it out instead of spreading more.
Well, it doesn't affect my seeing ability. I was, I guess I was fortunate because it was isolated for one.
I had it picked up nicely.
I don't feel too bad. It was two and a half weeks ago. Yeah, they never kind of advised at the hospital about while I was recovering.
That's usually when you're on, right? They hurry up and get you out of there.
What was it?
The arrest.
Oh, I, the chair was over there, but when I saw their staff last week, I traded our air.
I don't need it, I just keep bumping it, so.
And Chuck, you know Chuck stepped down because of health reasons, so we are short one person now. They can know of anyone that wants to apply.
City of Southern Planning Commission meeting for Tuesday, March sixteenth, twenty twenty-one, at seven P M. It's now in session. Uh, please stand for pledge. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, to the republic which stands one nation under God, made of this one. Uh, do you have any media? No. Not today. A little minutes for January nineteenth, twenty twenty-one.
Make a motion to approve amendments as written.
Commissioner Diggle? Yes?
Aye.
Aye. Commissioner Woods?
Aye.
Commissioner Shonoski? Uh, whoa, printed mold one. Commissioner Price? Uh, Commissioner Davidson?
Aye.
Chair Lee?
Aye.
Hey, next item of business is legislative hearing. Uh, do we have a disclosure? I don't have to memorize.
No, it's gonna be legislative, huh?
Yeah.
Jeez.
Sorry.
This is all, yep.
Okay, uh, before I read the disclosure, uh, I'd like to ask you, this was the, uh, the development code was available to the public for doing. Okay. Okay, now, once the public hearing has been opened, all persons wishing to testify will be asked to come to the microphone and state their, I don't think that we have microphones.
No, it's here, it's in the room.
State their name and address. Those in favor will be offered a time to speak first, followed by anyone wishing to speak in opposition. The commission will also hear anyone wishing to share neutral comments. A three-minute time limit will apply. I hereby open the public hearing. And call those staff.
Okay, so just to get some of the information into the record, um, this is legislative amendments to our development code that you guys, um, if agreed upon, will make a recommendation to city council, and then city council will have all the workshops, followed by a public hearing and two readings of the ordinance. Um, so this is one of the two public hearings taking place. Um, council's scheduled to have that hearing on Monday, May tenth, at their regularly scheduled council meeting. You guys, as you are aware, have held four workshops, September fifteenth, October twentieth, November seventeenth, and January nineteenth, to review and discuss these various items that we have before us. Um, notice of this proposed amendment was mailed, uh, or uploaded on their website to the Department of Land Conservation and Development on February eighth, which was at least thirty-five days prior to this hearing. Um, the legislative amendments were sent to interested parties, as well as utility providers, on February twenty-third. It was also posted in the news review on March second to meet fourteen-day notice requirement. And as of the writing of this staff report, we'd had one written comment, um, from Gene Dolquist from the Fair Housing Council of Oregon that had commented, um, as they were conducting their research for the fair housing. So, following that, since this staff report, we have received additional, um, inform, or additional comments, a letter that was written by Samuel Goldberg from the Fair Housing Council, um, pretty much indicating that they were, uh, they'd observed that there was no written findings for statewide planning goal ten, which is the housing council, uh, or the statewide planning goal regarding housing, which I didn't write any findings for this. Um, part of it's just, I didn't know I needed to. However, all of our, um, most of these were a code audit, but from that code audit, which was to, for the housing shortage that's out there. So it's to provide benefits to this goal ten as everything that we're doing in these code updates. Um, so, not quite sure how to handle that in the findings, but we will figure that out. Um, the other comment that was received was from ODOT, and they had indicated that in the access requirements, um, they typically recommend twelve-foot minimum driveways. We use ten foot, which some jurisdictions do. They feel the fire protection agencies, um, generally prefer a twelve-foot width. So it's, um, you guys can kind of discuss whether you, that's something you wanna consider before we move it on to council, but I wanted to make sure we added it into the record, so, um, you guys were aware of their concern.
Definitely should discuss right now.
Okay.
And the fire department received these.
I was gonna ask, did they make comment about that?
I did not receive any comments from the fire.
I mean, as far as this recommendation.
Um, I have not shared it with them yet.
But we've discussed this before in Kevin.
And we discussed it through the T S P process.
Last year, talked and everything.
And typically what we do, so if there's, in our driveways, which we have increased through our land partition process, we increased the allowance of three users, um, on a access, or three dwellings, I should say. Um, and with that, so typically we require twenty feet of pavement and twenty-five foot easement if there's multiple users. So that allows a ten-foot travel lane passing distance, which a lot of our city streets have ten to eleven-foot travel length. So, a single driveway, uh, just one house on it, has, I've not noticed a problem. Um, and I think it was talked about through in previous years, so it's, uh, however you guys feel, we're open to discussion.
Why didn't you have, uh, ten, minimum ten-feet driveway for at the discretion of the fire department?
Well, and currently we have a minimum of ten feet, and it goes to, I think, twenty-four, um, for a single block. So we have a range that somebody can always go wider. We just have set the, a minimum established at ten.
I think we talked with fire department, fire, and they said ten foot with more about to get a fire truck in there. Going, we have the door, or multiple dwellings, it's probably twenty to twenty-four.
Right.
And then.
Yeah, cause when they, they have to pave a minimum of twenty feet of the twenty-five easement for multiple blocks.
I'm okay with that.
Well, seems kind of hard to go wider when you're traveling.
Yeah. Well, a lot of it too is, it's not like it's Portland, some of these driveways are half a mile long. And you're lucky if you can get ten feet sometimes.
Well, and we work with, because also you gotta consider, they, people have to pave their driveways in the city. So having a paved driveway, the additional expense, and while I recently learned when we tried to waive something or delete something else about parking in the code, um, the L C D said how hazardous, um, asphalt and all this is to the ground, and, you know, it puts all of that drainage runoff into the environment and so on and so forth. So it's kind of a catch-22. If you widen it, then you have probably some environmental hazards that could be issues that could be raised.
By a different agency.
Then maybe it could be a life, health, safety. So either way, it's a life, health, safety, I guess.
Every city has different situations. And ODOT is kind of trying to cover the base for everybody, which sometimes.
And, and like Adam said, it's not Portland, and a lot of our standards that we could be held to around here are Portland standards. I mean, those metro areas make us all suffer.
If our department's happy with this, I'd say leave it at two.
I would agree.
I, I would say, um, leave it at ten, but maybe direct contact with fire department, ask them to verify it. And if they say yes, yes.
Yeah, because we, we have an emergency access that, um, a developer just had to build for the fire department specifically, and the fire department did not require more than ten.
They have to write off on anything new, any.
Well, yeah, and then, yeah, depending on slopes and the grade, they have to, we have to get their approval.
Right. Actually, some of these driveways, they have to excavate into the hillside, and here's the fill just to get in there. To benefit to residential hillside property.
Yeah.
And that's all we have left.
Yeah.
Okay. So we will bring it up and to the fire department, and I can make that note in our findings as well as we move it on to the council, so they also are aware of the discussion that was had and, um, the recommendations. Um, so really, these, the codes are, um, everything has remained the same since your last, except for we did follow up on the bed and breakfast, um, struck the five-year minimum requirement that you had to be, the house had to be established by, at least five years. We struck that. I have not had any objection, especially with the housing need out there. I think that that would also be supported, so, um, the rest of everything is pretty much the same, so we can do a real quack, real quick. Yeah, so unless you guys have additional questions, um.
I have a question, just to give you a brief one. Um, when I was looking through the book, and I was looking at the, the, um, the definitions.
Okay.
And then the definitions, I remember last time we spoke quite a bit about, um, breweries and pubs and tap houses and stuff like that, but there's no definition in the.
Those, we talked about what we're adding.
Oh, yes, I want to add those in there for clarification.
And you wanted this.
Yeah, and I, and I read through this, and I was, I didn't see that in there, so. And then there was one other question that I had, I should have tapped it, but I already been read, so. Um, it was regarding, and it's just, it's just more the question than, than any, it's about drive, um, drive-throughs. And on the drive-throughs, it says that it has to be facing away from this, the street or a backyard. And so there are some, some of these, the drive-throughs, for example, the one that's down by the Younge House, the drive-through window is facing the wall, it says it has to be behind a, um, like a.
Are you referring to the little kiosk one? Okay.
Yeah, and, yeah, it would have to be behind a, um, like a planter or something.
So that one is pre-existing is what we'll go with, because that one was done in, I'm gonna say oh-five, maybe before, oh-two maybe? When it was established, it's also known as a temporary mobile vendor at the same time, um, so.
It's a different category.
Yeah, um, and plus it's pre-existing to this code, so this code was established in two thousand and seven when it was separated from the US code, so. But now, if somebody was to come in and build, they would have to comply with that behind or on the side requirement.
And, and lots of people have had some sperm damage, a tree and snow crush.
Okay.
Well, their building's oversized, but it's grandfathered in, and they told me they need to repair it, guess we tore it down and built, but they can't tear it down and build it, because they think it can't, have to be built to the, probably can only be built in a. Is that true?
We don't have a fifteen-hundred square foot requirement, the county does.
Yeah.
So are they inside the city or outside?
In the city.
Um, so. And our requirement is, in today's code, it's your accessory, but we can't exorcise your house.
So, it's true.
It's a case by case.
And it could depend on the zone, because if they're in a commercial zone, and they're a house in the residential, then they, it depends on the seventy-five percent of the assessed value.
And I don't have them just call us, having calls, because they'll have to start their worksheet with us, but to know what they can and can't do. Cause certain people talk, and it's never, you know.
And I don't know if they can talk to you.
I have not heard of that, so. We're so hard to get along with. I'm sure they didn't like what we had to say.
Yeah, have them, tell them to give us a call.
Are you, uh, the staff report?
I am, so, ask if you guys have questions.
Why is it so cold in the woods?
Come on, back to the staff report.
Thirty-one degrees and out on the bike, it's fun.
Okay, now we're gonna receive any testimony, uh, anybody in favor of the proposed policy.
Do you have anyone on here? Let me see, join. No.
Anybody?
Yeah, no, I'm in favor.
Anybody in opposition? Nobody? Uh, any neutral comments? Nobody? Okay, uh, we'll close the public hearing then. Any further discussion from the commission? Anybody wanna make a motion?
Commissioner Diggle? And you're first.
Yeah, no.
I'll have to swap you down. Commissioner Woods? Commissioner Shonoski? Commissioner Price?
Aye.
Commissioner Davidson?
Aye.
Chair Lee?
Aye.
Thank you all very much for all the time you've put into this.
Thank you.
It's not over yet.
You're working it, you're just be good.
And when do you start up, Nick?
I'm done.
Next one.
Okay, monthly activity report, uh, any comments, uh, questions about the monthly activity report?
Mr. L G G, which one that they got, let's do this. Yeah, and so since doing this, the L G G grant for Ford's Pond was awarded to Ford. I don't know if you've seen it in the news, I think it's on the newspaper, and, um, the five hundred and seventeen thousand eight hundred and fourteen dollars, so.
That's for the, like, parking area and all that outside of the pond?
Yeah, and the additional cap. To L G G P.
It's, so, it's part of the recreational trails, it's the local government, um, local government something grant, um, but it's all part of, it's so, the recreational trails program splits their funding, so this is one of the funding opportunities, and then the R T P, which is, um, the larger pot, is also one of them. There's. Um, lottery funds, and that's why it was on hold for so long, because the lottery funds were obviously slow, and since they kicked up, I guess, they are able to start funding some of the projects again. And then we also submitted to the Oregon State Marine Board recently, um, for the boat dock and the parking area, gravel parking area, boat dock, vaulted toilet, and, um, I guess it's on here, can't remember the other piece.
The three that you got as well, chose, cause of the dollar amount.
There's lots happening out there, it's gonna be great. Everyone's excited to see, and every, all the presentations we've given for the grants, they are very positive feedback, so.
Cause they're still to build a, some sort of connecting trail between that and the, the best playground. I know that was in the parking lot at one point in time, some way to connect them.
From Ford's Pond to?
Yeah, from Ford's Pond to the.
Yeah, um, so it ultimately will work on getting like bike paths and, um, whatnot, probably at one thirty-eight, possibly forty K, but, um, it'll connect, and then it'll take kind of, even coming down central's part of it, connecting South California, and then connecting, it was supposed to go through the seventy-six gas station parking lot, but it actually, they, because of their possible future improvements, we might have to, we're gonna improve Valentine, which then we'll take you to the Bedrock Bay, or not Valentine, Glen, Everett.
Yeah, cut through, across the track.
But the plan was to run it under the freeway down Central and then out.
Yeah, so as long as all of our sidewalks and bike paths connect, it will. That's so.
It's scary on a bike.
She's been ran off the road before.
That's like ninety-nine between Oakland and Southland's the same way. Somebody's gonna get killed out there eventually. I'm surprised it hasn't happened.
I haven't rode since, my bike's still dirty from the crash. I like you, I like you. Any other questions, comments?
Okay, public comments? Public comments, uh, commission comments. Norm?
Nope, good. Glad to be back.
Glad to have you back.
Good.
Okay, adjourn the meeting. Quick meeting.
Let's say, you did the. You have Thursday at seven.